Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Curtis?
Present.
Mayor Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Danuski?
Here.
Councilmember Sperry?
Here.
Councilmember Herbig?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Vannes?
Here.
Thank you.
Sherry, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. If there are no objections, the agenda will stand approved as written. Next item on the agenda is a presentation. Kenmore Waterfront Activity Centers, KWAQ, report. Mr. Cox, Mr. Ritchie, Ms. Shredneck, and Mrs. Baker.
Mayor Baker, council. We were going to have some more people, as Mayor Baker mentioned, but sickness is ill to two of us. So, I've got some notes that people have given me to talk about, but the main thing, I think, is this last year, we ran a... Okay.
And you guys can also sit at the table if you want to, since you're giving us a formal, whatever you're comfortable with.
This is easy. So, my plan here is, this report was in the board packet. I wasn't going to read the whole thing. You can do that at your leisure, and hopefully you've looked through it, too. But the main thing I wanted to point out is, we did have some changes with our kayak program, which has, we see that as being a minor setback in terms of numbers of kids that we expect this year. We are working actively with the Archbishop Murphy School at the moment, and they're hoping to bring 15 kids down for their own program this year, and we're looking to expand that. So ideally, we'll have about 30 kids coming through the program this year. That's the plan. It's going to be a plan, and we need to find staffing. And, as I said, this is our second year. We had a bit of a growing pain that we've worked through, and we're now looking for the future. Our biggest success, by far, has been our dragon boat club. Sherry's been taking the lead on most of that. Is there anything you want to add on hours and people? But I think the report stands for itself. A lot of people. It's been slow during the winter, but we're hoping now the sun's coming out and the hours are longer, we'll see more people out on the water. And if anybody wants to try dragon boating, it's a great way to get some fitness, to meet some new folks, and just to get out there on the water, it's fantastic. So I would strongly encourage anybody to give that a try. New this year, we've added a stand-up paddleboard element. We're working with Steve Holmes with the What's Up Paddle Sports. He had this vision of a paddle sport club he wanted to bring to Kenmore, rather than just having the rental program. So we work with him, and he's going to have classes that he runs focusing on boat safety, user safety. He's really concerned about some practices that he sees on the lake with people not wearing life jackets and not performing. So he really wants to focus on that, and that's going to be his focus this year. So hopefully, we're going to see some growth there. The other exciting thing for this year is, one of members, Debbie Shredneck, she's really been pushing us on the rowing, and she's working with the Pocock Foundation. They've scoped out rhododendron, and from what they can understand, they can actually do what I guess they call beach launches, where you can just wait out and jump in the boat, and off you go. So they're going to give that a try. They looked at squires, but the trouble there is space, and then just the dock is really hard to get in a rowing skull from the height of that dock. So they're looking to start at rhododendron, which was great, because that's the envisioned location for that program anyway, so it's perfect. And we'll be working with them as they get that going. So, you know, exciting new things for the year. We're looking to build the kayaking program. The dragon boating is certainly, I think, that's something that we're really going to grow. Hopefully, we'll get a bigger boat, or a smaller boat, I'm sorry, which allows us to keep going through the year, because often we have to cancel because there's not enough people to drive this big boat. But if we get a smaller one, that'd be better. And then, with two boats, we might see more people. So kayaking's going to go, I think that's going to take off as more people, as the sun comes out and we see more. And I do know the stand-up paddle boarding is a very easy sport to get into. You just get on the board and go. So I see that as being a great way to build community, as is the rowing aspect of it as well. And I think I've said all along here that our goal as a group is to get people on the water. Yeah, racing's great. It's good to go out there and represent Kenmore in races, but really, just getting people on the water safely, that's the goal of our program, and I think that's really going to help the citizens of Kenmore. So thank you again for your support, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have just a couple of things to add. We have recently put e-fliers in the school district and put packets out at the three elementary schools and the junior high. And there's even information out here regarding the different programs, which I think is going to go really well. And we're planning a couple of events. The dragon boat, we're having an awakening ceremony that I've just kind of started posting on Facebook and different places. So I think that's going to be a kind of a fun, smallish event, but one of our paddlers wanted that, so we're taking off with that. And we're also doing an all hand-powered water craft race from Redmond to Kenmore on the 21st of May. So we have some upcoming events that I think will be a lot of fun and can get some community involvement. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? All right. Next item on the agenda, then, is the consent agenda. Oh, excuse me. Next item on the agenda is public comment. This is an opportunity...
Proclamation.
Oh, proclamation, I'm sorry. This page went blank all of a sudden. Next item on the agenda is a proclamation, and this is Volunteer Appreciation Month. And whereas President Barack Obama has designated the month of April as the time to recognize the hard work, dedication, and passion of volunteers throughout our nation; and whereas the city of Kenmore commemorates National Volunteer Appreciation Month by recognizing its valued volunteers at our annual Volunteer Appreciation Night; and whereas in 2015, city volunteers gave 2,790 hours of service to the city; and whereas volunteers can connect with local community service opportunities through hundreds of community service organizations; and whereas individuals and communities are at the center of social change discovering their power to make a difference; and whereas the giving of oneself in service to another empowers the giver and the recipient; and whereas experience teaches us that our government by itself cannot solve all of the nation's problems or satisfy all of our cities' needs; and whereas volunteers are vital to our future as a caring and productive nation, now therefore I, David Baker, Mayor, City of Kenmore, Washington, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2016 as National Volunteer Appreciation Month. In the city of Kenmore, and I urge all our citizens to volunteer to give local and/or national service to our communities throughout the year. By volunteering and recognizing those who serve, we promote partnership, understanding, and collaborative problem-solving in our community. And accepting this for our volunteers is... Oh, good, Mrs. Baker. Over to us.
(inaudible)
Next item on the agenda is public comment. This is an opportunity for you to express your views on issues that are important to you and your community. There is also a public hearing tonight on the PAUE. If you're going to speak about the PAUE, we ask that you do it during the public comment portion, during the public hearing portion, and not during the public comment portion. So, public comments. Clerk, please call the first person. All right. This is on public comment, Mrs. Mooney, not PAUE.
I know. Elizabeth Mooney, 5934 Northeast 201st Street, Kenmore. So I am just here to thank you all, staff and council, for the resounding "No, we don't want your demolition of your 520," whatever you want to call it, floating, dilapidated, disgusting, old bridge in our neighborhood. And with that, I just feel like, as citizens, we have a lot more confidence talking to other citizens. Today, thanks to the caucus, we had more people that happened to be over at Kenmore Junior High, and so we ended up talking to some people, and I think they'll be helping write Department of Ecology saying, "No, we don't want that foot in the door," which is the NPDS. We talked to staff today, really appreciate that. It was kind of an intense day, so to the extent that council can just know that we are really trying to work with you to, say, protect our ecosystem, Wash.KGM, take your recycling elsewhere. And I think we're going to have to have the opportunity to work really hard with all of our legal brains, all of our connecting with the community. I don't know how to do it, but maybe it would help me, anyway, if we had some day each week where we go and work together, find out what's happening with you, because if this turns into sort of a fight with KGM and WashDOT, they have very deep pockets, and the timeline might be tough. But I just want you to know that Bob Green and I talked today, Janet Hayes and I talked today, talked to staff, Rob and Brian and Teresa, and I'm hoping that we can get this woman who's at Department of Ecology and her boss. Her name's Teresa, no, Melinda Wilson, and her boss is Robert Wright, and I think that they're considering allowing us to have a hearing. And the comment deadline, though, is April 1st, and that is not enough time to tell the rest of the citizens that the dilapidation or demolition or recycling of concrete is happening here. It's just not easy to get the word out. But maybe we could meet for coffee. I don't know what to do. But comments are still due April 1st, which is a horribly short timeframe to that woman, Ms. Wilson. And we've asked for a hearing, but I have not heard back. She said that her boss, Robert Wright, took the lead on that, and I got no answer. Maybe the city could write them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mooney. Anybody else on public comments? Seeing nobody come forward, thank you, Ms. Mooney, for your comments. And next item on the agenda is...
Your Honor, may I speak to Ms. Mooney's comments?
Certainly.
If it's okay with you, we would like to extend, we would like to ask for an extension in that comment period deadline, and we'll also ask for a hearing as well. I was just conferring with our city attorney, and we think that's a legitimate request.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda. We'd already closed citizen comments, but, okay, go ahead.
Janet Hayes, 6303 Northeast 181st, Kenmore. And the hearing we had heard about that may occur, they were talking about having it in Bellevue, and so what we're doing in our emails to them is asking to have it in Kenmore so they can see and maybe feel what we're feeling and what have we felt for the last five years with the activities. They not only were disturbing, and they caused a lot of traffic and a lot of damage in the lake, but I don't even know where I'm going with that. It's very upsetting, and I don't want it to happen, and I thank you all so much. And whichever way we've got to do it, we've got to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes. Next item on the agenda is... You need to sign up, too, please. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
No second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda stands approved unanimously. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Ordinance number 16-0418, proposed changes to the public agency utility exception, PAUE, to the city's critical areas regulations, KMC 18.55. Ms. Spent?
Thank you, Mayor. So the hearing tonight is to receive input on the proposed amendments to the public agency and utility exception rules, and following the public hearing, council has the opportunity to discuss the proposed changes and act on an ordinance which should adopt the changes. This is the second public hearing this evening. You held a first hearing on February 22nd, where you directed staff to bring back some proposed amendments for consideration, and then on March 14th, you reviewed that proposal and then directed staff to schedule a hearing and bring forward an ordinance, which is the reason why we're here this evening. So before you open the public hearing, I would ask Lori Anderson to give a brief overview of the proposed changes and also let you know public comments that we've received in advance of the hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. As Debbie mentioned, tonight is the second public hearing on the proposed changes to the public agency and utility exception rules. As you recall, the PAUE allows public agencies and utilities to apply for an exception to the critical area rules if following the rules would prohibit either a proposed public project, such as a sidewalk or park improvements, or a utility service extension, such as a gas or electrical transmission line. The PAUE is a type 2 land use permit requiring a public comment period and a decision by the Development Services Director, which is appealable to the city's hearing examiner. In Kenmore, the PAUE has been in place since 2006. However, a legal interpretation in 2009 determined that the PAUE, as written, could not be used for public agency projects but only for utility projects, and the proposed amendments clarify the code consistent with the original intent of the provision. The Washington State Department of Commerce includes the PAUE in their sample code provisions for drafting a critical areas ordinance, I've mentioned that before, and most surrounding jurisdictions have a similar exception. As required, the city sent the PAUE amendments to Commerce for review and comment, and no comments were received. We've received five emails today. I believe all of those were forwarded to the council. All were in opposition to the amendments. I wanted to point out one clarification. The public comment letters stated that the PAUE as proposed could be used by private developers for non-utility projects. This is not the case. The PAUE is applicable only to public agencies or to utilities. The PAUE applies throughout the city except in areas covered by the Shoreline Master Program. Those are the areas near Lake Washington Swamp Creek and the Samamish River. Prior to adoption of the new shoreline rules in 2012, the PAUE was available for use in the shoreline areas, but the Shoreline Master Program eliminated this opportunity. So the amendments clarify that the PAUE could be requested by either a public agency or a utility delivering water, sewer, stormwater, electrical, or gas service. The rules state that the development proposal must benefit the public, the proposal must minimize impacts to the critical area buffer, and the proposal must mitigate impacts to the critical area to the maximum extent practical. For impacts to wetlands, the proposal must strive to meet the mitigation performance standards of the code. So that concludes my overview of the amendments. May I answer any questions?
Questions? Councilmember Sperry?
Thank you. If a project was being proposed and this exception was part of that proposal, would that project still have a normal appeal process and all that?
So if a PAUE was requested, there would be a public comment period, and then the Development Services Director could make the decision, and it would be appealable to the city's hearing examiner.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. So I declare the public hearing on ordinance number 16-0418, proposed changes to the public agency utility exemption, PAUE, to the city's critical area regulations in KMC 18.55.
There's no one signed up.
Anybody wishing to sign up and be heard? Anybody wishing to sign up and be heard? Mrs. Mooney, do you plan on speaking also? Would you please sign up?
Janet Hayes again, and you got my address.
You need to state it again, please.
6303 Northeast 181st, Kenmore, Washington. And I had a question, and it regarded other municipalities and their use of paws. And I'd like to know where and what is occurring where those paws have been used now in the other municipalities, and did any of those municipalities have a state park? Is there... I'm wondering how that will eventually end up working, and did this have anything to do with Puget Sound Energy negotiations? I had heard their name mentioned when I was at a meeting two months ago regarding that St. Ed's was part of the negotiations. Thank you.
Elizabeth Mooney, 5934 Northeast 201st Street, Kenmore. As a citizen who spoke about the PAUE in the past, one, I would have appreciated knowing why it popped up. We thought we put this exception to sleep in 2009 with Todd Bergman working hard to protect Wallace Swamp Creek Park. And I think I asked that before. I don't know why this popped up again. Okay, so we have a Boy Scout. I haven't introduced myself, but I'm president of a nonprofit, an environmental nonprofit.
You're addressing the council, please.
I am. What I'm trying to say is that as a mother, as a friend of the Boy Scout that put up a sign at Log Boom Park to protect that stream's riparian zone around it, I'm, as a streamkeeper who took the class of it, adopted a stream, as a volunteer of the streamkeeping salmon in the classroom at Lockwood that the council, and thank you, the staff years ago, supported with Adolfson, thank you so much. We have kids who grew up from Lockwood who are now environmental stewards. They know where to put a ball field that's lighted, that's made of turf, and where it's not a good idea to put a lighted ball field. And this PAUE is an exception so that people that may come past your time would maybe be able to make an excuse to destroy wetlands where wild frogs, salamanders, bird habitat exists. If you put lighted ball fields at a place like St. Edward Park, you will not get those birds back. It's not possible. They can't live in that habitat. So the Boy Scout, it was an Eagle Scout that put that up, Joan Hardy and Greg Rujeron's son, David Rujeron. I have five minutes, right?
No, three.
It was five last time at a hearing. You told me that.
It is three.
It's changed.
Our regulations have been three for a number of years, though.
Okay, well, I would have appreciated being told that, because this is a letter that came, that challenged the prior council over the PAUE. I don't even know how you all changed it, but I think the main point here is, what do you want to be remembered as? If I were on that council, I would want to be remembered as sticking to laws that are going to protect what is left of our trees, our wetlands, the zones that are around the streams. Not only is it good for the animals that we want to protect in the salmon restoration, but it's also good for surface water. If you just look at it from money point of view, you're going to bring in more people who don't have to fix up your floods downstream if you protect wetlands upstream. It says 21 seconds, so I think I have that much longer. Also, if you look in the Bothell Reporter, a very wise woman, Susan Mailu, wrote about just being good stewards, and I've already said, if you want ball field help and finding places where the trees are already taken down, I'm happy to help. I don't think it's a wise thing to do, and if I were a council member, I would not want to have made an exception to our critical areas ordinances that are meant to protect the future generations' wild wetlands, streams, trees, bird habitat, et cetera.
Thank you, Ms. Mooney.
Hi, my name is Ann Anderson, 16304 81st Place in Northeast, and I'm here tonight for my kids, and I don't think it's right to mess with critical areas. You've already deemed critical areas. Also, I questioned the Development Services qualifications and checking it. So I've seen this in our tree density regulations. I'll see Development Services get out their phone to check to make sure it's the right tree, and, you know, we don't have an arborist on staff or an environmental science, so I just, I feel it's a huge burden on Development Services, and it's also a conflict of interest. So we can just okay whatever we want to okay for luxuries and not necessities. And where are the checks and balances? Like, what if we re-mitigate critical areas and cause irreversible damages? Then who's that the cost to? It's the cost to my kids. Now, I have a kindergarten coming in next year because there's not enough space. We didn't do smart planning, right? So, you know, let's just, let's think about this. And then what about, what happened to the wind tree throw? The wind tree throw, the tree wind throw ordinance? Like, just this past windstorm, there was a tree that fell right next to the clearcut area, that fell right across Moreland Elementary School. As my kids are maybe, you know, I mean, school is canceled, but, so a tree fell right on Simon's Road, and it fell right on 81st Place because it clear-cut land, and then, so, I mean, when is that going to be enforced? So I feel like we already have poor regulations. We have no regulations to save old growth trees, and now we're messing with wetlands area. And also, I think we need to think about luxuries and not, like, are we doing this? Like, who proposed this PAUE? Who proposed it and why? Let's think about it. Is it serving just a few, or is it serving many for our future? And, you know, I'm not against this principle just because, I'm not against the PAU just for St. Edwards and maybe the ballpark fields and the... for St. Edward's and maybe the ballpark fields and the bright lights. You know, I'm happy walking around the parking lot if it becomes a big parking lot for ball fields. I'm okay with that. But I'm talking about the principle of it. You know, the PAUE is a latch of ditch effort used by cities to keep a project moving forward after they have already failed to qualify for all necessary permits through normal channels. And it's similar to eminent domain. Okay, so you want to acquire land that private property owners are willing to part with at any price, but the clear, the clear, anyway. So please oppose the PAU.
E.
PAUE. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Anybody else wishing to be heard at this public hearing? Anybody else wishing to be heard? Anybody else wishing to be heard? I declare the public hearing closed. I think there were a couple of questions. Could they be answered?
Okay. So Janet Hayes had asked whether any of the other jurisdictions where the PAUE has been used, whether they have state parks. I don't know the answer to that question. The question was raised whether this has anything to do with the PSC negotiations. The answer to that is no. I would say that PSC, both the electrical and the gas service, if they were proposing a project that involved a transmission line, it's possible that they could, at some point in the future, use this process, try to use this process, but it is not a part of the negotiations of the franchise that are going on. There was a question about where, why this has come up. This has been on the city's list of potential code amendments, docket amendments, since 2009, when the legal interpretation was made. So it's, it's been on that list over several years, and it finally rose to the top. So that's the.
Well, and if I could add to that, the ball field issue did speed it up. It's still to be determined whether we will be directly impacting a wetland at St. Edward State Park. Prelimarily, it's looking like we'll have little to no direct impact on the wetland. We'll be in the buffer like the current field is now. But, but the ball field piece did move this up the docket probably faster than otherwise would have done.
All right. I declare the public hearing closed. Next item on the agenda, adopt ordinance number 16-0418, the Public Agency Utility Exemption Amendments. Ms. Vint, anything to add? The chair will entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 16-0418. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And I'll second. Any further discussion? Councilmember Herbig.
First off, I want to thank staff for all their work on this. I know that this has been a lot of work for you guys. And I do support the parts of this that'll make it easier for us to, say, build a sidewalk or other really necessary things going forward. But I am going to be voting against the amendments because I think it goes a little too far and makes it too easy, too easy for us to affect critical areas for things that aren't strictly necessary. So, thank you for your work, though.
Any further comments, questions? Hearing ended. There's a motion in front of us to adopt ordinance number 16-0418, Public Agency Utility Exemption Amendments. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
No.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
61.
All right.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, time-limited parking discussion. Ms. Harris.
We're going to see if the projector's working. Does everyone have access to the agenda packet with the image of the street map? Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I am joined here with Chief Cliff Sutter as well as City Manager Rob Carlinsey. He may be joining in as well. Tonight, I'm going to provide an overview of the draft ordinance for council discussion. The draft ordinance provides for the establishment of maximum periods of parking on city streets and in city-owned parking lots. It also adds new sections, 1020-040 unlimited period parking zones, and a section on permit exemption from maximum parking period. It renumbers prior section 10-20-040 on violation penalty to .060 and stuff. So the goal of the draft ordinance is to increase the availability of parking on city streets and in city-owned parking lots, particularly at City Hall, at the Town Green Site, and for downtown customers by establishing time-limited parking restrictions. At the present time, the code does not address this authority to establish the maximum parking limits. Following council discussion and direction, we can, staff will prepare a proposed ordinance to bring forward to a meeting in April. So tonight's just for council discussion. So at this time, I'm going to provide an overview of the draft ordinance in section 1020-040, the limited period parking zones. It authorizes the city manager or designated to establish maximum periods of parking of motor vehicles in city-owned parking lots and on city streets. The initial implementation areas that I'll highlight in a little bit on the map will enhance the parking opportunities to downtown users by increasing on-street and parking lot, parking space turnover, and reducing full-day use parking by commuters. The next section, permit exemption for maximum period parking, to help achieve the city business purposes here at City Hall, we recommend authorizing the city manager or designated to issue parking permits in order to exempt motor vehicles from the maximum time period restrictions. By doing so, this will open up additional parking spots at City Hall for business purposes for customers and also park users. The next section is 10-20-060 for violation penalty, and this is renumbered from 10-20-040, but it establishes the maximum penalty for any violation of the limited period parking zones of no fine, no greater than $50. Enforcement will be conducted by the Kenmore Police Department, and they will schedule officers on overtime to enforce the limited period parking zones. This expense is covered by, covered in the existing budget. Revenue generated from the $50 parking violation will be credited to the city. However, the net amount received will be minimal, if not neutral, as it will also assist in covering associated court costs. So in your packet, there's a map that, is the projector not working? Projector must not be working. So this is, it outlines, the map outlines some potential areas in downtown Kenmore to initially establish limited period parking. One of those areas, so some of these areas are actually going to undergo some construction improvements, sidewalk improvements, restriping, so we would recommend that the time-limited parking be established following those projects. One is 68th Avenue Northeast between 181st Street and 182nd Street. This is actually to increase the amount of street parking in the downtown. We are restriping 68th Avenue Northeast between 181st and 182nd Streets later this year. And following this completion, we would recommend the addition of the time, the time-limited parking signs at that time. On Northeast 181st Street between 68th Avenue and 73rd Avenue Northeast, there's going to be sidewalk projects happening on the south side. The project's scheduled to begin in spring 2016, and on the north side, the project's expected to begin in 2017. Since vehicles won't be allowed to park along this street during the construction process, we recommend to add the time-limited parking signs after the completion of the north project. And also, additional parking's going to be added along that with the sidewalk improvements. Last one is the street parking on Northeast 181st Street between 68th Avenue Northeast and 67th Avenue Northeast. So in front of the town green airspace now, and along the east side of 67th Avenue Northeast, this is across from where Cooley Smiles is located. There's some city street parking along that roadway there. So that's currently available, and we would just recommend establishing time-limited parking in that area as well.
And if I could add that this diagram that you see is not exact. It's just an estimate.
Oh, yes.
Restriping may actually yield even more additional on-street parking than you see here. I was just talking to our traffic engineer the other day, and he may be able to squeeze in some parallel parking on the north side of 181st, right in, right in front of the Town Green, right in front of the Pavilion Building. And also, some restriping might yield some spaces right across from the car wash and people's storage, you know, right there along the south side of 181st, along the, what I call the cell tower lot. So, again, these, these lines that you see are just estimates, and it'll be plus or minus.
And for the time restrictions, we are thinking of two-hour parking time restrictions from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. So we'll still allow for evening parking, overnight parking. So for implementation, so prior to installing the, any time-limited restricted parking signage, we'd want to notify the surrounding businesses and residents of this upcoming change. And also, once signs are installed and as part of the public notification process, the police department will issue warnings during the first week of implementation as well, so we can do some education. So at this time, I'll turn it over to the mayor.
Questions? I've got a quick one here, looking at the, the second page, the 10-20-60, looking at the different fine structures. The reference is to 10 dot 20 dot 35, and without not having looked in the code, actual code itself, I see the fine for that is $350. The question that I have is, if we were to install school zone cameras, the fine is based upon parking tickets, if I remember correctly, is that then based upon the $50 that we're seeing here in 10-20-40, or is it the $350 that's on 10-20-35?
You're talking about if we were to do school zone camera fines? Boy, I can't remember.
It might not be tied to parking, parking, because it's a non-moving violation.
Chris, do you remember I, my, I, sometimes when I check a box, I move it out of my memory bank because I feel like I've already covered it, so I can't remember, but.
I would only add that when we were talking about those cameras, we were just making the frame of reference that those zones are treated more along the lines of traffic tickets are not moving violations. So I think we were making the correlation, but we never actually did talk in depth about what a fine would be for those cameras.
And she's correct. We didn't establish what the fine would be. We said that would be the same as a parking ticket. So if, it wouldn't go against the, it wouldn't go against your driving record, so.
It's the same as a parking ticket is where I'm going. Is it the same as the $50 in one code section, or is it the $350 in another code section?
That would be determined.
Okay. Councilmember Herbig?
I'll just answer your question. I think the RCW authority just says it can't be any higher than our highest parking ticket.
That's exactly what I was going to add. Thank you.
That's what I'm trying to figure out, is 350 the highest parking ticket? That's.
That's what our code says, yes. That's for, yeah, certain parking, like fire lane parking and that kind of stuff.
Okay. Thank you. You have questions?
I actually have one, Mr. Mayor. So having recently paid for parking downtown, I'm wondering if $50 is enough to deter people from parking here versus making, you know, parking their car all day here. So if we pass it with the $50 maximum in, in this ordinance, then do we have to revisit the ordinance? I guess that's more of the lawyer question. If we find that it's not working, or we need to up it, do we have to readjust the whole ordinance?
I can answer that. The answer is yes.
Okay.
How does the $50 compare to surrounding cities for similar violations?
The $50 is on the higher side. Cities range from $20 up to $50 as well.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think so. Do you need anything more?
So the, is the ordinance's fine as drafted?
We'll bring it back as written at a council meeting in April.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right. Next item on the agenda, Police Services Highlights Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It is once again that time to bring the annual Police Services Report. So what I'll do is, I'll just kind of, like in previous hearings, just go through and highlight some areas of the report for you, and I'll be glad to entertain any questions that you might have. At the end of the presentation tonight, I do want to talk about the upcoming change that we're going to be having when we go to NIBR's versus FCR's. So we'll kind of save that for the end, because I'm sure we'll have questions about that. So the first page, in page nine of the report, is always a nice little page, city cost comparison to kind of take a look at, so you can kind of see where we kind of fit in with all the cities surrounding us and the whole area. So you can kind of see that we're actually getting a pretty good, pretty good deal with the contract. It shows you the sworn that we have. Now, this is, this includes also the sworn officers that you have, the portions of officers that you get out of major crimes, and, and the other portions of, of the ancillary services that you get, the cost per capita, and the cost per sworn, and then, of course, the sworn per thousand. So it's, it's just kind of a good barometer to kind of gauge on how well you, you know, your dollars spent compared to other cities. So just want to bring that to your attention. I'm sure you've all looked at that.
That's a good point. I mean, we've got two cities on either side of this, right? We're at 156, and the others are well into 200?
Right. That's correct. So then, moving on to page 10, the Part 1 Crimes for, for Kenmore, we've always compared our, our cities to the, the four cities that you see here because they're pretty close to population-wise in the area. And our Part 1 Crimes, we are the lowest out of the four cities. And we pretty much, it's pretty consistent, if you look for the last, since the last five years, we're pretty consistent across the board of our Part 1 Crimes have been pretty low. And, and you can see our population is slowly going up there. It's nothing dramatic. And then the next page, page 11, homicides, been zero for the last five years, and we'll try to keep it zero for the next five. try to keep it zero for the next five. It's a good goal to have. I want to bring your attention to the rapes, because I know that probably raised some eyebrows. They're going from, gosh, four to nine. What's that all about? Just because somebody reports a rape doesn't necessarily mean a rape occurred. You know, people oftentimes report things that aren't necessarily true, or, or that actually happened. So I went back into the reports and looked at this, because it was one that kind of raised my eyebrow too. Out of the five, there's seven reported rapes, and then two child rapes. Of the seven reported rapes, five of those rapes were unfounded. So what happens is they report the rapes, the detective's assigned to an SAU, Special Assault Detective, they, they investigate the, the crime, and after talking to the victim and doing the investigation, they realize that the crime actually did not occur. So five of those seven were actually, didn't, they, they were found to be unfounded. So you can see, even though there was nine reported, and it go, it goes against our crime stats, that we don't really have that kind of a problem here. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. There's still two that, two child rapes are still being under investigation, so, and then the other two are still being investigated. So this really kind of comes in line with the actual investigations are kind of compared to the year before. So I just wanted to make sure that we're, I brought that to your attention. Aggravated assaults are down, and, and like we all know, these numbers are so, they're so few, I mean, you know, one or two brings it down and, and whatnot, but 11 to 2 is, 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 you know, a good number. Two is probably, like to say, the last five years is the lowest that we've experienced with aggravated assaults. Robberies, three, so we're just kind of, you know, between two, four, two, three, and fours is, is a good mean number for us. And then the next page, arsons. Unfortunately, this last year, we had a group of juveniles that ran around the city setting fires. Actually made several arrests and got some convictions. There was a group of four kids, a couple 18-year-olds and a couple 15, 16-year-olds that were running around, actually set a, a set of fires, a set of houses on fire that were under construction, did thousands of dollars of damage. The officers got on scene quickly, were able to track them down and make the arrest. So unfortunately, from zero last year to six this year, we, we get those kind of crime sprees coming along, and there's not a whole lot we can do. Fortunately enough, we were able to catch these kids and get some arrests and some convictions out of them. Burglaries, pretty flat, about the same as last year. Larceny's up slightly. Next page, Part 2 Crimes, we're up a little bit. Actually, I guess we're about the same, 29 to 29 grafted. So we're right about within the three cities. The fourth city's kind of a little higher than us, but I think Covington has a lot of commercial area in their cities, in their cities, so their, their Part 2 Crimes is a little higher than ours. So we, we're keeping it within reason here, no big, no big jump, jumps or any concerns I see. Going on to the next page, page 14, domestic violence, slightly up, or not domestic violence, but DUIs, slightly up. And that's just because the officers are out there, you know, looking a little harder and finding, detecting the DUI driver and making those arrests. Are there more out there? Sure. We try to get out there actively, search and, and look for them and make those arrests. So it's just up a few from last year. Domestic, domestic violence is up a little bit from last year, from 72 to 87. The best we can do is just hope that we can cut the recidivism rate down, educate people, put people in jail, keep them in jail a little longer, hopefully that the no-contact orders that are issued by the court are honored by the people, which are about 50% done, and that the ones that break those orders, we arrest and put back in jail. So it's, it's one of those things, it's just a lot of education for the domestic violence area. Next page, vehicle thefts are pretty flat, 33 for last year, 33 this year. Thefts from vehicles, this one always drives me crazy. If I could just get people to keep stuff off their seats and out of view, this number would go down probably two, to maybe one or two a year. But it just, it's a challenge. The other challenge is to get people locked their doors. They think because they put their car in their garage and their garage door shut, they don't have to lock their doors and they don't have to keep stuff out of their cars. A lot of these thefts come from people getting into garages and opening up car doors and stealing stuff out of them. And then, of course, the bottom line is attempted thefts from vehicles, that's where people attempt to get in there and steal. And a lot of that is just contributed to, if they don't see anything on the seats, they're not going to mess with your vehicle unless they want to steal your car. So it's a big education piece that's always been one challenge that we've tried to educate people throughout the city, and we'll continue to do that. Collisions are down slightly, and noting that these are not, these are excluding the DUI and hit-and-run collisions. So we're down from 217 to 212. And these traffic complaints, citizen traffic complaints, just want, so you understand that there's two, two avenues that citizens can complain to the city. One is through the county, they can call up and complain through the sheriff's office, which, that's what these numbers are. And the other one is through the Citizen Action Request, the CAR system. So that does, this does not reflect the CAR system, this is only the sheriff's office numbers. Okay? So people call up, and we'll do an iris report, which is in our system, complaining that people are speeding in their neighborhoods or whatever, and that's how we get these Part 1 and 2 cases closed by arrests, we're doing a little better this year. We've made a few more arrests, not a whole lot more, but it's, it's on the up, which is always good. And then juvenile and adult charges and arrests are up pretty significant on both. So it just allows us, we're doing a little better investigation follow-up, a little better ability to charge people with crimes and, and take them to court and have them answer for their crimes. Next page, 18, Police Calls for Service. Dispatch calls for service are up a little bit. And just to kind of go over this again, this is the non-audited numbers. So every month, I go through our dispatch calls for service, and I highlight the, the things that, that don't, that should not be counted as a dispatch call. And I usually take between three and five calls out a month that don't belong there, and I tell Downtown. And then they take those out of the audited calls, and they use the audited calls, dispatch calls, for the, all the formulas and the contract costs, not this. So I don't know, this is just, there's two different people doing those, it's, and I want to make sure that the audited calls are the most important for us, because that's what, how, what drives our money and how we get charged. So this is consistent, this is consistent, the non-audited ones, these are consistent from throughout the years. And then the alternative call handling, that is when you pick up the phone, you make a report with Downtown, and you don't have a police officer come out to the scene, you just make a phone report. That's what the alternative call handling is. So these are, 71 phone reports were made this last year. Okay? Average response times, I think we're doing really well with that. Priority X, 1 and 2 is all that's reported here. Those are the highest priority calls. I think we, we've done pretty good with all three of those calls. The priority X, which is the highest call, it was slightly down, a little faster time response. The other two are just a little bit longer response, but not within reason. You know, it's a six-square-mile city, to be able to get within eight minutes to a call is pretty good, considering traffic, where the, you know, you could be at one end of the city and have to go all the way to the other end, and, and the traffic and everything else is not, not, not a bad response. Especially for your priority X calls, too, a little under three minutes is not bad. And then the next page, Commission Officers Per Thousand, this number is worthless, I don't even want to, you know, it's just not worth talking about. We've talked about this before, and it's just, it remains the same, because, you know, it pretty much goes along, how many officers you have and how many, what the population is, and, so unless you have any questions about that, we'll just kind of skip over that. Dispatch calls for service per officer, so it shows your officers are pretty busy. They handle about 288 calls, each one of them handle 288 calls a year per officer. So that's just the dispatch calls that they're out there. The other flip side of that is that they have on-view activity. So when they're not answering a call, I expect them to be out there turning over stones and making stops. So when they're, this is what they're answering, 288 calls, and they're probably doing a lot more, probably twice as much activity on the on-view activity. So out there making stops, talking to people, writing tickets, making sure the city's safe. And of course, the last page is just contract cost per capita, and cost per thousand of assessed value, just kind of for your information. That's as far as I, I really think we need to go, unless you have any questions about any other part of the report. And I'll answer any questions you have about the report before we go into the, the FCR versus the Nibers.
Any other questions? Captain, Mr. Mayor.
Cost per capita, 144.61, and on the table, it's 156. Why is that? Why is there a difference? Is it a different measure?
Okay, cost per capita is what?
Well, on this last page, on the graph, it's 144.61 per capita, and on the table of all the cities, Kenmore is 156 per capita.
They may have used a little different figure here, up here. They're trying to use apples to apples on this, on this page, whereas they may have used a little different graph here. I would say...
Either way, it's a good, good value.
Yeah, it's really pretty good. They're trying to be more comparative here, because what they have to do is a lot of, a lot of different cities, you have to take out different costs and try to use universal costs. This is strictly, this is strictly the, our Police Services costs here. So it may have been a few extra costs that they may have filtered in here to, to make it more comparable on this chart.
Okay. Any other questions? All right.
Okay. So now to the dreaded Nibers. This is going to cause some heartaches for everybody, including the biggest headache for me. We, we've been talking about this for a couple of years. Last November, we were supposed to start this Nibers reporting, and because they had some problems with the, with the system, it was delayed. So what, how this is coming about is, we have what's, our iris system is how we do our reporting, our crime reporting now. That system is being changed slowly, they're bringing over what's called TE, Total Enforcement. We are scheduled to go through our Total Enforcement training and, and change over April 12, 13, 14, and 15. That's when the city, along with Precinct 5, will completely change over from the old reporting system to the new reporting system. And just kind of give you an idea, the old report, an iris report for a burglary would be three pages. A new report under the TE for burglary is about 15 pages. It's just going to be crazy. It's going to be a lot more time-consuming for us and whatnot. So it's, that's, that's one piece of it. The FCRs, the uniform system that we had before, basically used eight crimes to come up with the Part 1 Crimes for, you know, your crimes per thousand. Now with the Nibers, it's going to have 50 crimes. So all of a sudden, you're going to look at these stats, and you're going to say, oh my gosh, crimes is, crime wave, where our crimes going out of, you know, way off the chart. And it's not really going to be true, it's, everybody's crimes are getting doubled. And I think there's a, I think Rob, City Manager, gave you guys this handout, you can take a look at the cities that have, went from the old UCR to the new Nibers, and most of them doubled when they went, and we can expect the same. If you look at ours, our crime, your, UCR crime rate, you know, the last comparison they gave here was 2011, was 17.5. Well, that would be double that. So it's, what we'll do, I'm not sure how they're going to do it, since we're going to change over in April, if they're going to, if, how they're going to split the year out. I'll have to talk to Downtown, see how they're going to do it, and once I find out, I'll let you, let everybody know. But what they're recommending is that you give this thing two full years, let it go for two years, and then start comparing the numbers, instead of just looking at the first year and saying, oh my gosh, we have a problem. Let the first year go by, and then let the second year come by, and then compare that first and second year together, and then you can kind of get a good feel how, where your, where your baseline is at, and then what the crime, crime rate's doing. We'll definitely put an education piece out to the public, because we, and we don't want the public to think that crime is going rampant in this city. And so once, once we figure out how they're going to report this, this part of the year, then we'll get ahead of it, get out to the public what's going to happen. Do I have anything?
Counselor Curtis.
Just a comment, when you report in the future, instead of, usually you kind of connect, you know, on these graphs from year to year to year to year. So a thought would be, stop it, leave a little gap, and start a new one that's twice as high. Because if they see go like that and all connected, they'll think there's actually a link. It's not like you've moved to a different universe. So just leave a little gap between the two, so that will give kind of the visual clue, whoa, something's really different here. Maybe we're, write the word Nibers right by that little gel or something. So I think there's some visual clues that you can at least give for the, the graphs that people will see that why, why it's different.
That's a good point, yeah.
Counselor Smith.
Thanks, Chief. I have a question regarding, when you say, for instance, reporting goes from three pages to 15 pages, how does, how does that one impact the costs for us as a city relative to the service that you as a police department provide us? Because I would assume that means you have to spend more time doing paperwork rather than doing some of your other police duties, and so is there an additional, will that eventually mean that each officer is less productive in the field and has to spend more time doing paperwork? And then, I guess the, 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 part of that is, are you actually less productive because of this change?
Well, anytime you change a system, there's a, a learning curve, always a learning curve. And this is going to be, for us, is going to be a high learning curve, because what they're going to do to us is they're going to just flip the switch. We're going to go from one to the other overnight. So it is going to be a high learning curve, and it is going to be, so we're going to have to learn it quickly. It's just going to, it will take a little bit more time to input it, but I think as we go along, we'll learn it very fast, and Gary, Gary Zorins has been the one representative from this area that has been the tester for, for this for the last almost two years now. They've, they've selected probably about eight people out of the department to test this program and to get all the bugs out of it. And so he's gotten pretty proficient at it, so thankful for us, we have him in the city. So if somebody runs into a glitch or a problem, we have him right there to help us through that. So he's going to be able to get us through it much quicker than some of the other cities are going to be. So yeah, it's, there will probably be a small, less production air, time, but I think that won't be very, it won't be, it won't affect us that much. We'll learn it quickly, I'll push, I'll push to get us going. And I could probably answer that question a little more effectively and better once I get knowing exactly what I'm getting into in April. Because I don't know, I don't know the system either, I just know what Gary's told me, and I've seen some of his reports that he's done. And so once I, I'm going to go through the training on the 14th and 15th, and, and once we all get it, then I can see exactly where we're going to go. But I'm going to push to get us going through there very quickly, and, and so there's not a lag period.
Do you anticipate in any way that there would be less of a desire for a police officer to follow through and to write an infraction or make an arrest because of the additional paperwork? When I like, for instance, in your data, you showed that the juvenile crime arrests had basically about doubled in the last year. If you actually look at those numbers, and I'm thinking, gosh, if that... I'm thinking, gosh, if that about doubled, then that's with this new system, I assume that's significantly greater paperwork if a trend like that were to continue. Do you see any slowdown in anything like that, or that that would affect an officer's decision on how they proceed?
I think the follow-up part of it, and that's where mostly arrests come as the follow-up, isn't going to be too much of a pain. It's just the initial reporting that gets all the categories in and whatnot is going to be more cumbersome for us. I don't think we'll see a reduction. And for the infractions and that kind of stuff, this is not going to -- we're not -- this won't affect that. So the ticket writing and all that stuff is totally separate from this. This is all just reporting the crimes. So if somebody breaks in your car, breaks in your house, you get assaulted, robberies, that kind of stuff. Everything that we went over here, the accidents and the ticket writings separate, is all separate. That remains easy and quick for us. It's just this other part. And I'd know, I think if somebody commits a crime in the city, we're going to be committed to the city that we're going to arrest them, and we're going to do the paperwork to take care of the issue.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor.
Maybe I missed it somewhere, but two questions. One, do all police agencies in the country, are they all going to this? Is there -- or is this something just King County's doing?
No, it's mandated for all police agencies.
By the federal government?
Yes.
Okay. And I don't quite understand why the reporting will be double. Are there certain crimes that we're not reporting now that will be reported under the new system?
So what happens--
Or why's the difference?
Yeah. So what happens is, you take a crime of burglary that somebody -- a burg one. Somebody breaks in your house and assaults you. That's a burglary under the FCRs. But under Nibers, now you have a burglary, now you have an assault, now you have all these additional crimes that are being reported under the reporting system. So instead of just one, now you might have four. And was the assault an aggravated assault? Was it involved the weapon? Did it involve hands? Now you're breaking down one group into a whole bunch of subgroups. And that's what -- that's why you have that.
Okay. That's why that number goes up.
Yeah.
So more detailed reporting and better explanation of what's already happening and statistics. Yeah. Thanks.
For me, the big downside is we won't be able to do an apples-to-apples comparison with other cities until early 2018 at the soonest. So--
Other cities aren't going to this?
Well, it's all staggered, and we won't have our own full year of reporting until the end of 2017.
Okay. All right. So we're going to get to see you once or twice more, right?
Couple more times. Couple more. My wife keeps pushing for three more times, but I keep telling her, "Well, I have to arm wrestle." Two more times.
Your Honor, can I just say a couple things? I would like to publicly thank our chief and our police department for all they do. The safety and security of its citizens is government's number-one job, and I believe that's where we should be putting our first dollars. And that's what Kenmore is doing. Chief, you know, he's kind of behind the scenes. You don't hear from him a lot. But what he does is so important, and what his officers do are so important, and they put, you know, they put their safety and their lives on the line every day. And, you know, I don't think we take it for granted, but I think it's worth recognizing at least once a year. So, and, you know, Chief, I've told you this before, but he leads by example. He is the most prolific ticket writer in the department. And I doubt that any other chief in the state could say that. So that's pretty cool. And the other thing is, I love our contract-city relationship. So I've worked with both. The contract city is just, it's so the way to go. You get the local control, and you don't have the headaches. I am not having to spend disproportionate amount of my time dealing with fires to put out relating to the police department. And because of that, I get to spend my time on other things, especially council priorities. So highly recommend staying with the contract model. And I'm especially pleased with King County and their professionalism. And they just do a great job.
My wife can attest that the chief is a prolific ticket writer. Thank you, Chief.
Okay, you're welcome.
All right. Next item on the agenda, ADA Assessment Update Presentation. Mr. Vincetti. Ooh, Mrs. Overly's too.
Hi there. By now, you know that our projector is not working, and we do have John's PowerPoint presentation uploaded on our website, and you have access to it. So I'm assuming you want to go ahead and talk about it. I know you can see it on your monitors, but the audience can't see it, which is unfortunate.
So when I advance the slides, will it advance for you? Do I have to tell you to advance them?
No.
Okay, great.
I thought that when the TV camera, we have this presentation and not the overhead. Is that right? So it's going out on streaming?
No, it goes out through the projector.
Oh. So Patty, this is the PDF version, not the PowerPoint?
No.
I think I can search for it.
I thought I looked in Public Works and didn't see.
Let's see here.
I thought I looked in Public Works and didn't see.
It's clear.
I went to Public Works first, and I didn't see it.
I thought it was in there. Oh, there it is.
Oh.
There we go.
Okay. Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Just a quick--
Oops. All right, what did I do?
So I was teasing John that we were going to do an early April Fools joke and tell you this was going to be a really dry hour-and-a-half presentation. He wouldn't let me do it.
We were really the dry.
Oh, trust me.
Okay, why is -- okay. Yeah, I could probably spend a good two hours just talking about the nuances of the ADA Act alone. But I'd rather have your attention while I gave this presentation than have you drifting off. So I'm going to try and keep this as brief as possible. And, well, I can't make it all that interesting, but I'll try. So I'm going to talk to you about the Americans with Disabilities Act that we have here. And the Americans with Disabilities Act has required the cities, all agencies, to assess their facilities, both in the street and any other properties that are owned by the age of the cities and whatnot. So we have to go through and figure out what we have out there. So tonight, I'm going to talk to you about, briefly about the ADA requirements. I'm going to talk about the assessment that we did, the results of that assessment, and then what our next steps are going to be.
There's no decision for tonight, correct?
Yeah, there is no decision. This is just pure discussion information only, just to let you kind of know what we're doing here in the city. So the ADA requirements require us to assess all of our public facilities here in the city. As part of that, we also have to -- agencies have to do a transition plan if you have over 50 citizens. We currently do not have 50, I'm sorry, 50 employees.
Excuse me.
We currently don't have 50 employees at this time, so we didn't have to do the transition plan. What that did for us is it saved us a lot of time and money in only having to do an inventory versus putting together an extremely long and information-filled document that talks about what we have, how it's going to get fixed, what it's going to cost, and it's a very large document. So all of this started with, in 1973, with Rehabilitation Act, which said that you can't discriminate based off of disabilities. In 1990, the ADA Act was enacted, which said that you have to give equal access to people with disabilities to all public facilities. And then in 2002, the guidelines were first drafted on how you build everything to meet the guideline, ADA Act. And then it was revised in 2005, and then 2011. So everything that we did with this assessment is based off the 2011 guidelines, which of course are, which are still draft. They have finalized them for some reason. So the assessment, we broke into three phases. The first phase was looking at the right-of-way. Our Phase 2 is going to be looking at public buildings and facilities, parks, city hall, community centers, that sort of thing. And then Phase 3 will be looking at policies, programs, and our communication system.
I'd like to add that this is something we budgeted for. We knew we had to do this, so it was part of our work program and budgeted.
So the Phase 1, the right-of-way, we did the inventory in 2005. We hired two interns who spent every day out in the sun taking measurements. So it took them about two months, it took them about half a month to put together all of the information. Took two months to take the data, and another five months to take that data and compile it and make corrections and go back out and get other information. So it was quite a long process to gather this information. So as part of the inventory, we looked at our sidewalks, our curb ramps, our pedestrian signals, crosswalks, and park, public parking. The interns used the combination of a data tablet and our GIS system to collect the data. This saved us a lot of time, so we didn't have to do a lot of double entry. They could go out in the field, input the information on the tablet, and download it immediately into our GIS layer. So a lot of time was saved on collecting this data. To give you an idea of kind of what they're measuring, what you see in front of you is a perpendicular-type curb ramp. And everywhere you see an arrow is kind of a measurement they have to take. So they have to measure the wings, the landings, the ramp itself, the gutter line. They have to measure widths and lengths. There's a lot of different measurements that have to be done just on this one simple ramp. Then the other type of ramp, a parallel ramp, is pretty much the same thing. They have to measure the slopes and the widths and whatnot on these ramps. And the sidewalks themselves are very similar to the measurement of the curb ramp. They have to measure the slopes and the grade and the widths of those sidewalks. And then also, I want to note that the curb ramps have a detectable warning. There has to be on every curb ramp, and it has to, it's very specific on what those detectable devices have to be. They have to be certain-sized domes. There has to be a certain contrast to the surrounding area. You can't have too much of a distance between the edge of that ramp or that truncated, that detectable ramp and the joint. A lot, a lot of rules that are, you have to look into. So to give you an idea of what they're doing with the sidewalks, here's a screenshot of the tablet of all the data they have to collect when they're out there measuring a sidewalk. And what they had to do is they had to measure every 200 feet of sidewalk for every sidewalk that's in Kenmore. And then they also had to measure any obstructions that were encountered. And then with the curb ramps, every single curb ramp has to be measured. All of this data that's in there, they have to plug in for every curb ramp in the city. With the pedestrian push buttons, even more information has to be collected to make sure that those push buttons meet the ADA requirements. So there's a lot of data that has to be gathered just for these little, simple things that you walk by every single day when you're walking around the city. So vertical obstructions, on the lower left-hand, you see a sidewalk with a lip there. The guidelines allow you no more than a quarter-inch difference between adjoining panels of sidewalk or cracks or anything like that. So anything above that is a noncompliant sidewalk. On the upper right-hand corner, you're allowed four feet between the edge of the sidewalk, not including the curb, and any vertical obstruction, any vertical object that's in the sidewalk. And so anything less than four feet is noncompliant. And if you have anything less than five feet, you need to have a turning space every 200 feet. It's a lot of stuff. And then below that is a curb between the sidewalk and a crosswalk or a crossing, and you have to have a ramp for every one of those situations. Also, vegetation is considered a vertical obstruction. So here, we're showing just different locations in the city where we have vegetation obstructing the sidewalk. That is also considered a nonconformance. We also have horizontal obstructions. Anything that is greater than a half an inch wide and half an inch deep is considered a horizontal obstruction and is noncompliant. This is a grate that's in one of our sidewalks, and those, the little holes you see there are greater than a half an inch. Now, this sidewalk panel is greater than a half an inch wide, but it's less than a half an inch deep. So that alone doesn't make it noncompliant. But the rules require that joints like that have to be perpendicular to the travel. So the fact that these are parallel makes it nonconforming. So when you look at this sidewalk here, it looks great. It's more than four feet wide. It's got a nice continuous grate. The grate's matching the road. It looks great. The slopes going perpendicular to your walk are nice. But this sidewalk is noncompliant with ADA because the joints are greater than a half an inch and half an inch deep. So the thing that's complicated about ADA is even though it might look compliant, it may not be compliant. So you cannot just assume that something's compliant because it looks like it. There's such fine measurements involved that it's really hard to tell. Now, in a lot of cases, it's kind of obvious to tell when something's noncompliant. On the left, this tree picture was not taken in Kenmore, but I wanted to find something that was pretty obvious that if your sidewalk does not, is if your sidewalk is greater than 5%, it's noncompliant unless it's matching the grade of the adjacent roadway. So if you have a situation like this where the tree roots have damped the sidewalk, and they build the sidewalk up and over it, you then make your sidewalk noncompliant if it's greater than 5%. And then on the right, you've got a driveway, and this is very typical, which you see in a lot of older neighborhoods where they just built the driveway, they made it fit into the sidewalk. This is noncompliant because the driveway's cross slope is greater than 2%. You're only allowed a 2% cross slope on that. And so the sidewalk that you see before the driveway is about less than 2%, but the driveway in front of it, that's there, is much greater. And then there are other cases where things are just bad all around. This is a patch job that was done because of the tree, eventually broke and cracked. You've got slopes all over that are in greater than 2%. The grade going up the sidewalk is greater than the roadway. It's just a mess. But this is the kind of stuff that we see every once in a while. Same thing goes with curb ramps. The, before they had the ADA guidelines, they've just built some kind of access to crosswalks, and this is pretty much what they did. All of these that you see here are noncompliant just because of the fact that they are either not wide enough or they don't have the detectable warning, or their slopes are off. There's a lot of reasons, no landings. But then, of course, you get situations like this. We've got two sets of curb ramps. One is compliant, one is not. The one on the left is not compliant because the landing has a cross slope or has a running slope that is greater than 2%. But it's so hard to tell just by looking at it that you have to go out and actually measure it to know for sure. So what were the results of our assessment? We measured about 202,400 linear feet of sidewalk, about 38 miles. Within the measurement, we figured out what was compliant and what wasn't compliant with ADA. And we were also able to determine gaps in our sidewalk network. We were able to create that. We also measured 722 curb ramps. Of those curb ramps, 206 were ADA compliant, and the rest were not. 58 of those locations were where there was no curb ramp from sidewalk to the crosswalk. We looked at 83 pedestrian signals, 13 signalized intersections. And with our assessment, we only looked at the signalized intersections. We didn't look at any of the block crossings with the flashing beacons. Of those pedestrian signals, 65 or noncompliant, 18 were compliant. And then public parking, we only have one location in Kenmore that's technically classified as public parking under the guidelines, and that's on 181st Street, right in front of downtown there, the angled parking. And that is not compliant with ADA requirements. You need to have at least one stall that's accessible to the sidewalk via a curb ramp. So there is not one there. And then crosswalks are very similar to sidewalks. They're measured the same way and have a lot of the same guidelines. Unfortunately, the requirements for ADA compliance with sidewalks or crosswalks here in Kenmore are going to mostly not be compliant because it's, we're hilly. And it's really difficult to get your compliance in a crosswalk in Kenmore for that reason. One thing also to, I just want to let you know, is a lot of this looks, can look a little scary with all the things that are noncompliant. But we don't have to bring everything up to compliant just because it's noncompliant. You only have to bring things up to compliance if you're going to be doing some sort of-- construction. So, if you're going to be tearing out the sidewalk, you have to put it back compliant with ADA. If you're tearing out a crosswalk, you have to fix the curb ramps. That's the reason why when we do our overlays, we have to do curb ramp work, because that's part of the law. And if we're doing any kind of, if we're putting in a curb ramp on one side of the street and the companion ramp across the street, there is no curb ramp and there's a curb, you have to put in a curb ramp. So, those are the kind of rules that have to be followed, and that's when you have to make these changes. So, another thing to talk about is the maximum extent feasible. Within the guidelines, they say you have to build everything to ADA as long as, to the maximum extent that it is feasible. So, we do have a lot of areas in Kenmore that are not compliant with ADA, but we provide, create these maximum extent feasible documents saying that we built it as the best that we can, and here's the justification for why we built it the way we did. So, there are some guidelines that the ADA does give you for considering something to be noncompliant and allowing you to build it as noncompliant. One is, is if the work to make it compliant is not in your current scope, you can pretty much say that we're not going to do that because we don't have it in our scope. Another is, if you're not purchasing right-of-way and you need right-of-way, you don't have to bring it up to compliance. Another one is, if it's historical or notable features anywhere around there and they get damaged, that's another reason. But in general, we can write an MEF for anything that we want. It's all risk-based, and how are we going to be able to defend ourselves for something that we've built? And that's really what this document does, is it's a document that says, "We did this for this reason," and we can write it for just about anything we want to, but it's just a matter of risk. So, we have to look at every situation and determine whether or not we feel it's a good risk to build it this way, or if we should try harder to bring it closer to the ADA requirements.
I was going to add, so, for example, when we did some work by Arrowhead Elementary and some new work at 170th, there is not perfect ADA compliance as we all would like around those intersections, and we, so we had to write MEF documents ourselves for the file. So, I think that ADA is very important to us, and when we do work, that is one of our goals. But as John mentioned, sometimes you have road slope issues and there's right-of-way restrictions, so we do the best with what we have, but we document the cases where we can't require it or we can't meet the standards. So, I think that, you know, you look at the big number that's scary that's not compliant, a lot of those we have recently built and documented.
And I'd also like to add that when the utilities come in and do work, or a private developer does work, and if they, they're required to also build things to ADA compliance, and if they can't, we require them to create an MEF document for us and for our review and our approval before they can build anything.
For example, North Shore Utility District will be doing some work on 73rd Avenue, and we've learned as an organization a lot more about ADA over the past year. I think that's one of the great things about this process John went through. He is now our internal ADA specialist, truly. But we've been able to work with our utility partners to help them better understand why we do what we do and why our expectations of them are the same. So, he's been working with NUD and maybe some other folks to help better explain the requirements.
And so, as I said before, the MEF, MEF documents are approved by the city. Everything that is done within the city, we approve. The only difference is, is on SR 522, the Washington State Department of Transportation has to approve those MEF documents. We don't approve those. And another thing I want to mention is, when I go through, when you look at the maps that I provided with your council report, you see a lot of things that are nonconforming, especially in areas where we've just recently completed construction the last few years. The ADA guidelines say that we have to document what is noncompliant regardless of whether or not we have an MEF document. So, even though we're showing a lot of areas that are noncompliant, we might, we probably have an MEF document to support why we did that. And another thing to, to explain is that when we, when the ADA, when the ADA guidelines came out, they are, again, guidelines, and so, of course, just like a lot of guidelines, there's a lot of areas for interpretation, and over the years, some of the interpretations have changed. And so, one day when something was compliant, the next day it became noncompliant. And so, it's, it creates a little bit of a difficulty for us sometimes when we're trying to build these things, but, again, it's, it's kind of a moving target sometimes. So, that's, that's kind of the challenge that we have when it comes to designing things to meet with the ADA. So, in your packet, you've got the map of the city, which shows a few of the things that we were able to generate from this data. We didn't, the nice thing about doing this assessment is we did collect information that is providing some useful things, tools for us. And what I did on the presentation slide here is I just did a blow-up around the downtown, around the downtown area, and on this map, you see where we have sidewalks in Kenmore. And I didn't include, I'm sorry. And on this next map, we show sidewalk gaps, which are in the purple color. I didn't include those areas where we're proposing to build sidewalks, like on 181st. I didn't show that as a gap, or in front of Main Street here, because they're going to be building sidewalks along with the Town Green project.
So, if you had a funded project, you did not include it?
Yes, if we had a funded project, or if we had a project that was in the works, like the private development, I didn't include that on the gap map. And then here, I'm showing all of the curb ramps in our general area, where red is, does not meet ADA, black meets the ADA. And, again, a lot of these curb ramps, they are, they were built noncompliant just because of the general topography of the area and, you know, MEF documents that are either created for them, or we've got something in the file for those. And then, in this map, we've got sidewalk locations that don't meet ADA guidelines. Each one of those points represents something that put the sidewalk out of compliance, either an obstruction, or a vertical lip, or a slope issue, that sort of thing. So, what are our next steps? We need to next do an inventory of our public facilities. We need to look at City Hall, the elevator, the restrooms, council chambers, any place that is open to the public. We have to evaluate that, including the parking lot and interior, exterior access. We have to look at all of our parks, parking lots, restrooms, play areas, sports fields, all of the places that a person could go, trails. And then, we have to look at our other public buildings. When the Town Green is complete, we're going to have to do an assessment on that. The post office on the exterior, since we own the property, the senior center, all those places, we're going to have to evaluate. Right now, we're scheduled to work on Phase Two beginning in, or sometime in 2017, and we are going to be doing Phase Three, but we don't have it scheduled yet. But we're not too alarmed that we're, don't have it scheduled at this point. Our goal was to get started on this. We've gotten started. We're showing progress. The Act has been, the requirement's been out there since 1991, and we're probably one of the few cities that have actually started an assessment. So, we are in really good shape, the fact that we've done this assessment. I think there, I think in the state, there are about three or four cities that have done, agencies that have done actual transition plans that's required by them. There aren't that many out there. So, we're, we're ahead of the game. But, oh, another thing I did want to mention is, when we create, when we did this assessment, all this data we've collected, it's going to be really helpful for us in terms of scoping out projects. If we're going to be doing an overlay, we can look at the map and go, "Oh, we've got curb ramps that aren't compliant. We're going to need to take a look at that when we put together our scope." If we've got a private developer coming in that wants to do something, we can look at our map and tell them, "Okay, these are not compliant. You're going to have to take care of these without us having to go out there and verify it." So, we've, we've got some really good data here. Even though this was required, we're able to turn it into something useful for, for the city to use, so. With that, any questions?
Councilor Herbig. You say that many cities haven't even started on this yet. This is a federal mandate, I imagine?
It is a requirement that, it's a federal requirement that everybody does this, yes.
A federal unfunded mandate?
So, the way the law's written, that if anybody receives federal funding, they have to comply with this law. If an agency doesn't receive any federal funding, they don't have to comply.
You say some, many cities haven't even started on it, so we're ahead of the other cities, but is there a timeline that the feds have said, "You've got to do this"? Or is there no timeline, and that's why nobody's done anything?
You know, partially, yes. There is no timeline, which is why nobody has done it. The impetus for us really, and for a lot of cities to have started this now, is that if you have federal funds, they have now said that if you don't do this, you're going to, you're going to lose your federal funding. And so, the, the guidelines that are out there now say that, you know, "We're going to start checking on this, and if you don't have it, we're going to pull your funding." And so, now, all of these agencies are scrambling to get this work done, and pretty much what they're telling us is that they don't expect us to have it completed today. They expect us to be making progress towards completing it, and that's what we've shown here.
But, yes, we received no funding to help with all this work.
I have one question regarding, when you have, now that we have an assessment, we know, like, some real problem sidewalks, I'm sure you've, we found some things that were probably on the radar, but now they're really front and center. Does, as a city, does that give us any different level of liability or risk?
Well, I'll take, I'll start, and then maybe our city attorney can add. We are required legally, you know, we're, it's a requirement that we know what we have. And so, I don't know if knowing what we have makes it worse. I mean, I think it's a great thing that we know what we have and what the condition is. I think it's a policy conversation, maybe for the next, you know, budget process, if there's anything we would like to do differently. We do make all of our new projects ADA-compliant to the maximum extent feasible. It's a priority for us, and we also do retrofits with overlay projects, and we're educating our utility partners when they do work in the city. So, I really feel like we've made great strides in improving ADA. So, I'd like to think that we haven't added risk to ourselves by knowing what we have.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask for the question? I, I think the city manager and I were discussing the same thing, so I didn't hear the question. But I believe we might have been discussing-
My question was, now that we've done a full assessment, or a comprehensive assessment, we have more knowledge than we had before, and we've probably identified areas that are more significantly understandard than we would like to have. Does that increase our liability or exposure?
It depends. And the reason is, on the positive side, if we have done the analysis ahead of other cities, it shows that we have tried our best to identify those areas that need fixing, and therefore, if someone sues us who is in that category, we, our defense would be that we are doing our best, and one of the reasons we're doing our best is because we've done the analysis. On the flip side, if we take too long to fix a problem that we have identified, someone who gets hurt may argue that we didn't act quickly enough. So, it can work, work both ways.
And I would like to add that the transition plan that is required for cities that have over 50 employees, that transition plan pretty much states what your problems are and how you plan to address the problem. We don't have to do that, so there is some, I think, protection there, is that we're not required to say how we're going to fix the problem. We have just, are required to identify the problem.
Transition plans include a layout of the work to do and a dollar value attached per year on how you're going to accomplish that whole plan.
That, that is good for the issue that I just addressed, yes.
I would say, too, that we continue to, as staff in my department, talk about sidewalks and vegetation, and the way our current codes are written and interpreted is that property owners are responsible for the vegetation adjacent to their property. So, if we saw a sidewalk that had vegetation growing half over it, and we wanted to clean that up, we would contact the property owner and say, "Please maintain the vegetation on your frontage." Same goes with sidewalk. Our code has been interpreted, or our code is actually more clear, that sidewalk adjacent to private property is a responsibility of the private property owner. I think we assign that responsibility, but we're not ultimately off the hook for safety responsibility. So, Rob and I have been talking, and I will be coming back in the next, maybe, month or two to talk to you about our code and what it says and how we've interpreted that. And now that you have, we have this knowledge about conditions, do we want to stay with our interpretation? We think the code needs some cleanup language regardless, but have a conversation about, basically, frontage maintenance, because we have sidewalk, we have vegetation, we have drainage ditches. If you think between the, you know, the edge of the roadway and then the private property line, there can be quite a bit of stuff there. And we do some maintenance, and we don't do others, and I think it's just, there's a need for a larger conversation. Because right now, the, what we do is if somebody calls and complains that a sidewalk has a lip, we reach out to the private property owner and tell them, "We've received a complaint, and they need to fix the sidewalk in front of their house or property or business." That's the way we operate now. So, food for thought for a future policy conversation.
That's helpful to know. Thank you.
Nigel. Is that okay? So, one frustration Chris and I have talked about a lot over the years is changing interpretation of what's ADA-compliant, and it gets more and more strict as the years go by. So, the, the Americans with Disabilities Act was adopted, I think, in 1990, so it's a little over 25 years old. And, and, you know, it's a learning curve, and you can expect the regulators and the folks in DC and all that to be making some changes in their, the way they interpret things. But it is tough to swallow sometimes, because we have some pretty new curb ramps out there. I want to say, less than 10 years old, less than maybe even five years old, that were compliant at the time we installed them, but since then, the interpretation, not the regulations, the interpretation of what's ADA-compliant has changed. And so, like, for example, we just, I'm predicting here, and maybe I'm over-cynically predicting, but, you know, like, we just, we did a bunch of curb ramps on Wantita Drive a year or two ago, as part of the asphalt overlay. Well, I'm predicting cynically, perhaps, that by the time, by the time we do the, that overlay again, when, when that road needs to be overlaid again, we'll probably need to redo the ADA ramps again, because they'll be that much more out of compliance, so.
I'd like to tell my story. It was not this agency, it was a different agency I worked for, and I was working on a state highway, and we were using the state standards for curb ramps. I mean, straight out of their book, and at the end of our construction project, the state inspector came and said, "Your ADA ramps are not compliant." And we went, "But, but, you know, you have thousands of employees, and these are the standards you made." And they said, "Doesn't matter, different interpretation." So, we actually did, during construction, replace some ramps. So, there, there is no, it just highlights the fact that, I think, agencies try really hard and take ADA very seriously, and it's hard to find out who the official authority is. You know, I'd love to find that one person that you can drag out to everything and get that definitive answer, and I've not found that one person. Our consultants are trying to understand, the state is trying to understand. So, we all agree it's an important thing, we're trying to do right, based on the current interpret, based on what we understand today, that is what our inventory is based on.
Is there a higher-resolution version of this map that we could play with or look at? Which map?
Just the maps that you have available here, the PDFs, I can't really, like, zoom in and see exactly, like, which side of the street has sidewalks, that sort of thing. At least on the PDFs that I have on-
I'd have to look into that. We converted our JS map into PDF, and I'm not sure if I can get it any higher resolution than what you have there.
When you were showing the slideshow and you zoomed in on downtown, it was much higher resolution than what I can get on the PDF, so.
Yes, I can highlight certain areas and provide you with a better view of what you're seeing. The actual map that I gave you, I don't think I can get any higher resolution on that larger-scale map, but I can zoom in a lot closer and show you more detail.
We can figure it out.
Yeah, we can figure it, yeah.
Yeah, just be helpful to be able to see, you know, which side of the side, which street, which side of the street has sidewalks and that sort of thing.
Do you get very many complaints from citizens about ADA issues, like the ramps and things like that?
Off the top of my head, I would say, in the four years almost that I've been here, the answer's no. I'm, off the top of my head, I can think of a few bus stops. You know, there's 153rd, there's some bus stops that aren't compliant. There was a bus stop right by, on 155th and 84th, where we had a request to do some work there. So, what we do is reach out and work with King County Metro, since they're responsible- So what we do is reach out and work with King County Metro, since they're responsible for the facilities at bus stops. If we're building a new project, we'll put in the bus stop. But it's so, my recollection is it's bus stop-related, and maybe one or two a year.
Thank you.
And most of the complaints that I've heard in the past have been more, an individual in a wheelchair can't get from point A to point B, but that's usually the general complaints that I've seen are related to that, and very isolated, and not that many.
But just because we're not responsible for doing the transition plan and spending the resources, we work with folks to see what we can do to be compliant and help, the goal is to help folks get where they need to go safely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, next item on the agenda, staff report.
Your Honor, tomorrow night... Tomorrow night, the mayor and I, and I think W. Bent, we are going to be meeting with several Washington State Parks Commissioners in Tacoma at 8:00 PM at a recreation complex in South Tacoma that has kind of the state-of-the-art, newer-technology ballfield lighting. And the reason we're going there is to see an example of a field that uses that latest technology in ballfield lighting. And the more the mayor, up to three council members, because we haven't noticed that. But it would mean a lot if a couple more of you could come, and be a great opportunity for you to interact with your counterparts at Washington State Parks. Any takers? We'll leave around 6:00, 6:30.
Well, I can tell you, I would, but I have a NPRSA meeting, and it's something that's been incredibly difficult to schedule, to get a quorum. And believe me, I would love nothing more than to go down there with you, but unfortunately, I will be stuck in Bothell.
Yeah, I've been talking to the chair of the commission, and I think he's going to get most of his commissioners there. So really appreciate them and their willingness to take time to do that. And then our landscape architect and ballfield lighting expert will be there as well. And then on Thursday, is a big day for us. We are going to go to, in front of the Washington State Parks Commission, and advocate for the St. Edward State Park Ballfield Project. And I think we've got a pretty decent presentation and good case to make, and so wish us luck on that. And Mayor, are you going to that, too? Are you going to be there? Thank you, good. And anybody else that could carve time out of their day to be there for that on Thursday? It's looking like we'll probably be giving our presentation about 2:00 PM that day, and so any of you that can come would be appreciated. One other thing is, well, a couple other things. This is our last regular meeting until April 18th. There's no city council meeting on Monday the 4th, and then the week of the 11th is spring break, and I'll be out of town. Not that you guys can't do stuff without me, but, you know, the agenda was looking kind of light, and a couple of other, yeah, there's a couple others of you that might appreciate that, so. No council meeting on the 11th, so we will, we'll be back on the 18th. But that said, we do have a special evening planned for the 5th of April, which is a Tuesday night at 6 o'clock, where we're going to have a thank you event for our legislative delegation, and cross our fingers, the special session will be over by then. I'm hearing that it'll be over in the next day or two. And that brings me to a statement that we saw via email from the governor that said that, "Hey, you know what? I'm seeing progress on the budget again, so I'm going to start signing bills again." So that was good. So bills that we might be interested in have a higher chance of getting signed by the governor now. So that's all I have.
All right. Comments, initiatives? Councilmember Smith.
Nothing to add, thanks.
Councilmember Sperry.
Nothing at this time.
Councilmember Curtis.
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Herbig.
Nothing to add, except apparently we're off the agenda. There is no council comments on today's agenda.
Well, yeah, I guess we are off the agenda. Was that a slip-up or on purpose?
Uh, it was not on purpose.
Okay. So, Mr. City Attorney.
Can we amend the agenda at this point?
So there's no council comments or initiatives here on the agenda as printed, and it was accepted by us.
Ah.
Do we need to stop?
You can amend the agenda further.
We can what?
You can amend the agenda by motion if you choose.
So, I would like, I can't do that.
I move we add council member comments and initiatives to the agenda.
Second. If there is no objections, the agenda will stand amended. All right. Thank you, Councilmember Herbig. Discover the issue.
Nothing for me.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on one of the classes that I went to back at the NLC meeting in DC. It was given by a professor at National, at New York University on creative cities, and creative class, and so on. And he cited a lot of Richard Florida's work. And so I just recently finished reading The Rise of the Creative Class, which was a book that was originally published about 10 years ago, 10, 12, 12 years ago. And it was rewritten and revised in 2003. And that's the book that I just finished reading. And it talks about...
Did you mean 13, 2013, revised?
The revised version here, it says 2003. Maybe it's 20, maybe it's a misprint on here, I'm just, I'm not looking at the book. And, yeah, I think it was, it was originally written in around 2000, or late 90s, and then a new edition just came out three, four years ago. And he classifies workers in the creative class, the working class, and service class, and how they contribute to the economy. And it's really an interesting book, and I read it, read these things in view of what we're doing here in Kenmore. And we've been doing a lot of things right. And I think the business of the way we run the incubator, and a lot of the creative things that we're doing, having fun in Kenmore and so on, all contributes to an atmosphere where the creative class can prosper, can grow. And it's a creative class, a creative economy that we have now, in contrast to the industrial economy, and prior to that, the agricultural economy. And we've talked about it as being a service economy, but it's really a creative economy. And the, and what you do in a city that fosters that creativity is what's going to determine how your, how your economy and how everything's going to develop and grow. So if anybody would like to read that book, I'm done with it, and I can get it to you if you want. It's about that thick, but there's a lot of, a lot of good detail in there, so. And it also said that if, quoted somebody named Burden, I think, who made the statement that if our country, if the world was run by our city's mayors, we would have a much better, much better world, that the mayors are closest to what's going on in the economy and the people, and reading, and the more decentralized government and policymaking is, the better off we're going to be.
And there's actually a movement to create a Congress of Mayors, based on that concept.
Yeah, some, I don't know where they quoted him exactly, but that was the gist of it.
So, Sound Transit 3. Last Friday, we went to, we went there. There was a specific call-out by the, by the exec of Kenmore, and we got everything we asked for, and we keep our fingers crossed, it's not done yet, but we're having lots of fun. I went out to the exec state of the county address today, out in Redmond, and I said, "Well, you know, it's nice that you're out there in Redmond. I understand, next year, you have to go south, but the year after, you know, we've got a nice city hall, and we've got a lot of space. You could do your state of the county exec, your state of the county report right in Kenmore." So we've got a tentative yes, so we'll see what happens.